We'll go ahead and tell the speaking order I think Mr. Haven should be in the door any minute. He's got to turn around somewhere. Welcome, I'll call or make a board commissioners meeting to order. And I think you guys can do the same.
Also this time I'd call a special copy of the school board commissioners to order.
We were talking, I know these meetings started, we did it back when I was on school board every year. I assume y'all have been meeting over the years. So I think every year for a number of years, the school board and the county commissioners got together, talked about the budget. And upcoming things, it's good to keep those lines of communication open. So that's the purpose of this. So Mr. Riddler, you guys are the only thing on our agenda, so we're pleased to recognize you.
Well, thank you Chairman Corbin. Thank y'all for visiting our schools today. Y'all have played a vital part in us having this time to sit on. So glad you came out to visit and give tonight before y'all provided for our children. I made the promise I'm gonna keep my mouth shut today so we get through. Y'all have somewhere to go, and I do too, so I'm gonna pause raise eyebrows by promise I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. Chris knows what is going. So basically, I think Chris and Angie are gonna present some of the numbers to you, and then at that point, all we're gonna do is answer any questions y'all might have.
Let me say this one, unless I missed the purpose of it, I think what we're gonna do is receive the information, which this is the first time we've seen this, but I think you gotta copy it to Derek, and he's working on his budget. We'll get to him next week, next Tuesday. So we'll probably not say how much, we give it his, yeah, we get a chance. But we'll be ears and listening.
Just to build on what Chairman Riddler said, thank you all for being here today. Appreciate y'all coming out, taking time off of your day, if you're listening to our needs. Also, again, as Riddler said, thank you for this building and the other capital improvements that you've made over the past 10, 12 years. This is this building here serving 380 students today, and will serve many generations of students to come. That's gonna have a good impact on making any school system. I, and I believe I've spoken to the board, and I say that we appreciate your support in terms of capital need. We also appreciate your support in the current expense increase that y'all provided us last year, especially in light of what the state has cut our budget over the past few years. As we, as educators, administrators, teachers, as we deal with things like what we hear from the state coming to budget cuts and things like that, over the past year or two years, we've also heard a lot about, a lot of negativity about public education. And, you know, that's something that we've tried to pay attention to and come to grips with, at the why, what are the reasons for all this negativity around public education all of a sudden? You know, I know we had a technology bubble, we had wars, we had a real estate bubble, we also had a banking bubble. We've had several.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one down?
It seems that, it seems like at least to us as educators, that the answer is, is to do away with public education. And that's hard for us to understand, and it's hard for me to explain to teachers, principals, and things like that when we meet. It is helpful that I'm able to point to the support that we've received from the county in light of all this negativity and budget cuts. You know, as I try to figure out, what is the source, what are the sources for all this negativity? The one thing that jumps out immediately at me is $41,300,000. That is the, that is what Angie and I have looked at and determined that it cost to run making any school system last year. And, you know, I don't think that there's any one of us in this room that looks at $41 million and thinks that's a small number. That's a large number. Particularly the major, because I was growing up, getting through college $2, now $41 million. Hurts, that's a, that's a large number. Now, I can't work with a number that large, I have to break that down. We have, we serve about 4,400 students, so that works out to about $9,000 per student per year. That's still a lot of money. I'm gonna break that down a little bit further. We have 180 school days. $9,000 per student per year works out to about $52 per day for a child. Of that $52, $12 is supplied by the county commission. We do appreciate that. Now, what does that $52, what kind of services does that $52 per day buy a student to make a tennis school system? Well, it begins with that big yellow school bus that goes out there and picks them up in the morning, takes them home in the afternoon. With that $52, we heat those students in the winter, we cool them in the summer. We provide them two meals a day. We teach them to learn, to read and write, at least we help them to learn to read. If they have a desire to go into college after high school, we give them, we provide them the opportunity to take advanced placement courses and honors courses, which give them a competitive advantage when they try to enroll in a UNC system or other universities throughout, throughout the country. We provide them vocational courses to help them to get into community college and secure job opportunities. If they have special needs, if they're visually impaired or blind, we teach them great. If they have hearing impairments, we have sign language therapists, they're deaf, we teach them sign language. If they have physical deficiencies, we have physical therapy and occupational therapy. If they have problems at home, we have school psychologists and guidance counselors that can work with. And that, those are some of the things that we provide from 8:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the morning. I asked, excuse me, I'm sorry, 3:00 in the afternoon, that's better. My mind's getting in my head. I see you right. Well, now I'm gonna get to the 3:00 in the morning. We provide before-school and after-school learning centers. We provide extracurricular activities like band, chorus, clubs, like students with awesome goals, FFA. We provide athletics, volleyball, cross-country, football, basketball, golf, tennis, swimming, diving, and various other things. All, all of those things. Welcome, Mr. Haven.
Thank you, sir. Sorry to be late, folks.
You're fine. We just started, Chris would just give us an idea where all this money comes. Costs $52 a day per child. Can you just say what they get for the $52 a day?
You know, as I look at $41 million, that's a huge number. $52 a day for those services starts looking more like a bargain to me. And I think when you look at the amount of money that we spend on prisons in North Carolina, we spend about $29,000 per year per inmate in North Carolina prisons. That works out to about $82 a day per prison. So it sounds more like a bargain than we would get it like that.
That don't include the health care, Mr. Haven?
So we appreciate all the contributions that you make to that $52 a day. The $12 a day that we receive from the county commission, and also the state taxes that you pay in the North Carolina, because that comes back to us as well. But thank you for that support. And now what I'll do, if it's okay with y'all, I'll run through our current expense allocation requests. It's the big folder. Angie has highlighted the major PRCs, and I'll go over some of the increases and also some of the places that we've decreased. If you flip to page two, you'll see the first highlight there. That's PRC 001, that is our teacher salary. We are asking for an increase in PRC 001, and this is basically because of the projected salary increase that we've received from the government. It works out to pretty close to a 7.1% increase for years of teachers that have zero to eight years of experience. And there is a copy of that here, it's all good, it's like this. And that is what the governor has, the governor proposed that, and Senators Tillis and Burrow were right beside him, so I think that's got a pretty good chance of getting the...
And I'm meeting with him a week ago Tuesday. Today is what happened, I mean, there's no doubt about it, and that's where your lottery money is supposed to be. Except the construction fund, the lottery money, the lottery money you'll see will be converted dollars to teacher salaries.
Talking about the 100 million?
Well, talking about, 40% is supposed to come back to the school.
You're talking about the 92 million, isn't it?
Instead of the 19% we receive, we were just asking for it to go up anyway, but we were held by, not by the governor, but by the House Appropriations Chair, Mr., I guess it's in the Richard Lewis, Lewis, I guess, yeah, but thank you, so it's gonna happen.
And we currently have 37 locally paid teachers. That's down to 54, you did last year.
Again, last year.
So that 7.1 proposed increase is the reason for that increase. If you flip on over to PRC 002...
So that, just for clarity, that you have 37 locally paid teachers here, and that's the state's increase that they're giving all the teachers, the state's paid, so you have to match that?
Correct.
And what can you say we're doing?
It is.
And it would be extremely difficult for us to be able to do that, because we, teachers flow from state to locally paid.
And the teachers don't know whether they're locally paid or if the state has a call paid out of your, the state money comes to you and the local money, or local...
But the mandate applies to state teachers for...
It applies to teachers.
And then if they give a rights, not certified, it applies to their family.
And that looks like they're projecting 3% for everyone other than...
Angie, what do you figure on top of the raise? What, you figure 5%, 4%?
They told us to figure 3.
For the FICA, for everything?
Oh, no. FICA's 7.65%, and then retirement's supposed to increase by .22, I think, this year, and then...
So to that 7.1, we'd need to add how much?
Yes, the benefits to that. Well...
I tried to figure that out, I'm sure it's on here.
Just for the teachers alone, it's gonna be about an extra $68,000 probably.
But you've included that in here, you've included your FICA increase.
Yes, it's all in that main folder there.
It's all in that 100,000.
Everything's included in that.
But it's not a whole thing.
It's in this big paper.
At the end of where it says PRC 001, where it's highlighted, highlighted in yellow.
I got that, page 10. And 1671?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's all, the FICA and retirement.
I understand, yeah, thank you. I know you're straight.
On page three, here's the PRC 002, which is Central Office Administration, and you can see that we request a decrease, or we're projecting a decrease there from $178 to $63,000. The reason for that is we have some sources positioned at the central office, and we have replaced those folks back, and we won't have to provide the benefits to those contracted services. Just as a sort of a heads up on that, we will always be able to do that in the future when folks we've contracted with, when they decide that they no longer want to work with us, wouldn't like that we're gonna have to hire someone, and we're gonna have to provide the benefits to. Just wanna point that out to you now, so when we come to you, it doesn't look like such a huge increase, and we actually do have to provide benefits to the central office folks. But that should be, we should be in good shape for that for at least three or four Next, page eight, non-instructible support, we're asking, PRC 003, non-instructible support. Now, Angie, this is, this is custodians, clerical, both?
Yeah, custodians, clerical, and substitutes have that, and we pretty much have all of our clerical people district-wide on that support.
And we're asking for basically an increase here, that's due to 3% projected increase that we're, what we're being told to budget for, for the state. If you flip over to page nine, we are asking for an increase here. Basically, the reason for this is to be competitive with administrative salaries, both in our region and with Raven County, Georgia. I have the Raven County salaries scale here, if anyone would like to see it. And I'll just point out one particular, Raven County has about 33, 32, 3300 students compared to 4,400 students in Lakeview County. The highest paid principal, the two highest paid principals in Raven County, one student that would probably be a high school principal and a, I'm not sure of other principals, but two principals, at least two principals in Raven County make, earn a higher salary than Lakeview County superintendent does. So we have to be, as superintendent here, I'm concerned about what higher administrators are being offered to take positions in counties like Raven County, Georgia, and also other counties in North Carolina. So that's the reason for that increase. PRC 009, $25,000 is a decrease, and that is based on one of our retirements, etc., Angie.
That's the benefits that are paid out when somebody leaves that's locally paid, have paid their annual leave and longevity and everything else, the local fund, and that's what we're paid out.
PRC 12, 002, we've asked for an increase there, and again, that's just because of the state's projected 3% increase in salaries.
And they're reducing our allotment on the state side by about $7,000.
See, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The state is reducing our allotment in that PRC by about $7,700.
That's in drivers' edgake?
PRC 13, page 11, you'll see, you'll notice a reduction. That reduction is due to Mr. Burrow cutting some software that we didn't feel like that we were getting any work out of. PRC 027, we are asking for an additional EC assistance here, and that increase, that $61,000 increased over $37,000, also includes the projected 3% increase for salaries. Page 13, PRC 028, asking for just a small increase there, and that's just, Angie, what was that, $3,000?
That's just the benefits that go with staff and some things to increase for workshops and pay staffs throughout the summer.
Thank you. Next increase is on PRC 056, on page 14.
Skip, I know that $60,000 in total, too, I know.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to start talking about that. I'll answer any questions I can about where that money's going, which is, I have no idea where that money's going.
We can't find that, we tried.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
We actually have a business, it's making any taxpayer dollar, they told us, we don't know if our business pays.
PRC 056, transportation. This is basically, we're not receiving enough money from the state to cover our bus drivers, especially our substitute bus drivers. This is a budget shortfall that we endured last year, and it looks like we're gonna be going through the same thing again this year. We have made some, some changes to try to alleviate that this year, and hopefully that'll help some, but the state's just not giving us enough, us enough money to cover our transportation needs. Angie, is that what you're asking for? We're asking for the same amount, construction materials. EC pre-k, PRC 413 is a self-supported, we're asking for the same amount in our local substance, again, thank y'all for that, our local business, thank you, want to give those, the remainder of that issue, the principal substance as well. PRC 701, on page 18, that's another self-supported. Local transportation is down a little. Our place is down a little.
That's for repair parts and things for local county vehicles, which I can't promise it'll stay down due to current condition of the county vehicles.
You base it on your fuel, too.
We're not, we don't do as much staff development right now, so we're not going as much. We're out of town staff development, I guess I should say.
PRC 740, page 19, self-supported. PRC 802, that was just a budget error that we made last year, that we should have requested that $96,000, we came up with it.
We're not gonna judge the budget. Did you venture camp back or something? That was support of the school system, you're saying, and support by fees?
They charge tuition for that summer program, and so they don't use any public works.
That was $130 last year.
What was the $96, that much, you said, you were talking about?
I don't know.
We're requesting $286,000 this year, and it was up to 202 last year.
It's on the workers' fault, that first one.
PRC 804, we're asking for an increase in athletics. Two years ago, when we exhausted our fund balance, we cut co-curriculars, co-curricular assistance and assistance to schools for paying for their officials out of our budget to help make up for that shortfall. Our schools are, especially in Nanaa Halem Highlands, are nearing the end of their ability to fund those long revenue generating sports such as volleyball, Nanaa Halem Highlands, cross-country soccer, which is soccer revenue generating sport.
Oh, the guys soccer, but they never are able to pay for a quarter of their...
I don't have enough sports, sports developer. Let's just say it, the big difference is that we don't have football.
You're absolutely correct.
That's my passion.
And just, exactly. And just to give you an idea, we got some information today from Franklin High School. They actually, what they did to make up for that shortfall in the officials is they charged one extra dollar, so used their entire JV football day, went to officials. Now even with those two changes, they're still about, gonna be about $1,000 short. In other words, they're, even with those two increases, they're not gonna have enough to cover, their officials are gonna have to go in other general athletic, cover their officials. So that just gives you some idea of what a strain it is on Nanaa Halem Highlands for them to fund basketball, which is sort of revenue generating at those two schools, but long revenue in sports. They will not be able to continue very long building, build that play.
The Nanaa Halem, she was speaking, I'm pretty inspired. Should we price the families up a couple ballgames? You have a family come in there, it's gonna cost $20, they can't count.
They raise the cost to $5 for every person that comes in. So if you got a family with a couple of kids, you know, looking at $35 or $40 for one ballgame, and we didn't have any attendance at our ballgames this year.
Another alternative would be to go into a pay-to-play system, and there are some serious drawbacks to going to something like that. But that's, that's the risk that requires.
Is Highlands still in the baseball team out there? Are they...
Not, they do not, for sure they did.
The softball?
Girl softball, yes.
They are playing softball, yes. Well, Chris, I didn't even know that you were talking about pay-to-play, but the only thing I would say that, you know, when we go back, we are putting the kids out there at risk, most likely ones that need the basketball.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if they're making a half and half odds, play ball.
I am definitely not advocating that we go to a pay-to-play, but, you know, some school systems do, in order to make up this sort of a shortfall. PRC 805, slacking increase there. $15,000 for the accreditation process that we have to go through this year. PRC 806, it's about $100,000 increase, and that is due to utilities, utility costs. More likely associated with the partner we have. PRC 807, no change. 808, a reduction there. The biggest reason for that is originally, now, does this factor in trace salary in that? Angie, is that the reason for that?
That's, thank you for coming up to talk back, and wastewater stuff.
Right, we had, we actually had two folks retire. A wastewater treatment person retired, we contracted those services out, it's gonna be a savings, and also with danger term, we're gonna have to save on this salary question. Just an increase in natural gas.
Yeah, and we get the kids back on there, it's on the revenue side, we get the kids back, so that kind of offsets that.
There's no problem with, now, I think, with the new system, though, there's...
That's in the capital out of there, yes.
Maybe you could share with him what that is, how we're saving money there.
Now, let me bring that sheet, we have that, that cost savings that David gave us for what we saved about the one with that new system.
I'm saying about $10,000. You got someone running that this time, who's running the little system.
Right. Are you talking about how much we're saving on the contracted services or contracted systems?
It's like a good system. Pay for sale.
So that is our current expense, our operating expenses request. Angie, is this the code that you're looking at, that's not, that's what we were talking about in the first?
Those $7,839, we live in the revenue side, county appropriations down there.
Yeah, okay, that's right. Then $41,000 county appropriations. Last year we received $7,338, and this year we're requesting that on page 24. Requesting 7.839 based on the increases that I've, that I've gone over. The largest increases are due to that projected 3% salary increase and the 7.1... The largest increases are due to that projected 3% salary increase and the 71, 74% increase we're beginning to see. Any questions about current spending, including capital outlay?
Just to repeat, your current spending budget is essentially flat. I mean, it's a small decrease, but it's essentially flat, but you're asking for more of the county, I'm just trying to look at this real quick. You've lost your, lost your revenues, I see that there's some adventure camp, if that's a wash, right?
Yes, the summer adventure camp, the VIP is not in there, and the local pre-K, they don't.
It's not a decrease, David. It's not a decrease, like, are you looking at the 8942, 750, just opposed to 9060?
Yeah.
That's not apples to apples. The 8.9 doesn't include, what, the summer?
The summer adventure.
The summer adventure and the NC pre-K.
And that would add that number to 500,000 too, but total budget.
So, should we be more accurate, to say that compared to 8318, that's, that's your projected expenditure through the end of the year, right?
No, her projected expenditure is 8.7, on page 24.
That's for, yes, for this year. If you wanna dig the total, you could add about $500,000 to the pre-K program, the VIP, some of it, you have all of those self-supporting that do not take it. So that would put you at 9.44, as far as the total base. And that's an estimate, because I, what I do is wait till they finish up the year and see when they, when they finish up.
Your budget last year was $9860, but you're essentially flat from that, you're coming in a little, you're coming in a little cleaner.
I think that you're talking about last year, that did have the, all those other things in there, including.
Basically, if you took a half a million out of the $9,600, then you'd be at 8560, and you're going to 8942, if you wanna have a more apples to apples comparison.
Any, any questions?
Make sure we understand, so, on, on the county appropriation line, 78, 7839. Is, is that what we're looking at, as far as our budget? The $500,000 or more?
That's what they're asking.
That's what they're asking for, but I mean, that's what we need to look at, that number. But if you back out, okay, so this is a little bit different than what we've seen before, right, Amy?
Well, we've seen several last year, I think, so.
This is a little different than what we've ever seen before, though. We've never seen one exactly like this.
Right. And the only difference is this does not have those self-supporting programs in them, which does not use any county appropriation funds at all.
So you just zero them, you put them as a wash and then put them in there?
It's just passive.
That's, that's true, that's my truth.
They're just handling the money.
Yes.
Well, I'll say this, I think, I'll speak only for me, having a second position, I don't, I don't think, I'm personally not interested, I'm glad to see this and I will look at it in detail, I don't, I don't think our job will be as much to decide whether we've got the building to move like within those lineups, and I appreciate that. Like, what we're looking at is total expenditure, we started out with, kind of made January the 19th, I was, I thought it was December the 16th. Well, yeah, you start when we had a meet, our first meet, January 25th, we had a board retreat, and I think we give, from the director, A, we're not gonna raise taxes, there's our for that, and two, we're gonna try to cut where we can, because heading into this revaluation, I think we all know that we might have to make some tough choices, and where those values fall, because we don't wanna see both getting hit with tax increases, and this is our compensation, so our, our bottom line is, is gonna be, if you can stay within that balance, but I think, I talk to Eric about every day, he's done a great job so far with our, and I'd say, I don't wanna give away the budget mentions, I think, in most of our county departments, we've been able to decrease the budget.
Well, what we're seeing right now from the preliminary numbers, and going through with, looking at the county departments, working good budgets with each of them, you know, as the chairman said, it was a very clear direction from the board that we would not be increasing taxes on that, at our January 5th retreat. And another thing that, that we noticed there, and that was pointed out, is we're heading into a revaluation here, and that's going to, conservative numbers from our tax office right now are showing a decrease in our tax base as much as $2 billion, and that equates to about 5.3 million in revenue that the county is gonna have to make up. And again, it's not, we're not using these projections this budget here, but kind of the theme of this budget, and in talking with the department heads, is let's gear up for this revaluation, and the uncertainty that's gonna come with it. And in doing that, you know, I requested that all county departments, as best they could, hold the line, and ask themselves the question, you know, what's important now, in light of this revaluation, and face it with some other circumstances. What, what can we do, what can we do, what do we have to have, and what can we do without? And in doing that, and looking at the preliminary numbers, department heads, the county departmental request, we have reduced that number by 1 point, about $1.1 million off of last year. That's about a 4% decrease that, that county employees have, have really stepped up to the plate, and heated the direction of the commissioners, and been more than willing to bend over backwards to work with the administration, and to put us in a position to where we can idle into this revaluation, if you will, and see the effect it can have. And basically, it's representative of a level of service that we can operate at as county government, that we can pay for with the revenues that we're taking in. So, you know, the departments, I'm kind of, when I look at evaluating the requests of outside agencies and we're going through, we're, we're kind of, that same, that same scope is going into the revaluation, what's important now. You know, Dr. Baldwin and I, Angie and Lori have sat down numerous times and looked at this budget, and we're going to continue to look at it, but the key thing that, that I think's important and that we have to realize is that going into this revaluation, it's gonna be very important that we, that we're operating at a level that is representative of what we're capable of operating, and that's what we're trying to do, and that's what the county departments and outside agencies are working with us on right now. So we're excited about that, and look forward to presenting the board with a balanced budget on, on May 13th.
I've gotta say that, as Angie and I have worked on this budget, Derek and Lori, I've been impressed by their efforts at trying to, especially Derek and Lori, I think, already have been working on this budget, especially school budget, I've really been impressed with them, they're willing to work with us, understand the work of this budget, because, you know, last year was my first real experience with a school budget, and it is, I lost a lot of hair last year. I'm fully backed this year, either, I've been working with it. And I, we understand the situation, that, we stand for the maintain the tax, but what you're looking at. I would, I would like to say, that the concern that I have right now with the state, is we perceive the planning law from the state, based on our ADM, and we built this budget around that planning law. But what I'm starting to hear from the state is that there might be a cut after the short section of around 2%. That's just a rumor I've heard, that they have projected that pay increase, and they're gonna come through with that pay increase, which, that scares me a little bit, and that where are they gonna come up with the money for that pay increase? And I'm afraid that if they do enact that 2%, we're looking at a $400,000 cut to our state law, which would be a significant impact on what we plan on doing next. Very hopeful that that does not come to pass, but I will.
I'll tell you this, one thing we're, we're very active in, this board, is North County Association of County Commissioners, that's a, that's a strong group, because Macon County in and of itself has some influence for our, we have a relationship with legislators, but we don't have any relationship with legislators in Macon, Murch County, Wake County, and all of the state. One thing we pushed, I was on the legislative don'ts, to me, is here, one thing that we pushed so hard is don't send us these unfunded mandates. To me, that's an unfunded mandate, if they make a 2% cut, they expect the county to pick it, and stuff you gotta have, it's an unfunded mandate, so we're, we're working hard to make sure that doesn't happen, just so you know, we're working on the other end, trying to get the legislature not to, and I realize they, they, you know, they went down there, having, I'm gonna give the politics of the, with the deficit situation, and a cut in education would be the largest part of the, certainly would affect it, and we realize that, but still, we're all the same taxpayer, county taxpayers, state taxpayers, we're all the same people, so to me, that makes sense to cut it with the state, people to pay, pay back, I think that's the answer, and we're, we're working hard.
But it does appear the 2% cut's gonna be across the board. It's going to us.
But it'll affect everything.
Yeah, it will affect everybody, so it's like that, when they send the check and ask for the money back, we've been down that road, right, Amy?
Several times.
So, it's sort of like that, especially in DHHS, they've been notified, DOT.
They have, they've already been notified?
Well, they were, they've not stopped me, you gotta know, when the short section starts, it's gonna be short, I mean, short, short. We moved our assembly up to 26, 27, because we think they'll be out of there by, in the Ju, 1st July.
Well, they haven't been told since July, and this was, the state actually was looking at giving, the road maintenance, counties, you know, here it is, Macon, Murch County actually wanted to do that.
The state of Macon.
And, and that was one, that was one of the five things that the committee I sat on, said, no way, we're not, and we regularly sort of squash that at the committee level, so that's, as far as we know, that's gone. The state was, okay, you're scraping your own roads, you're, you're removing the snow, we don't have that equipment, so how, you know, how do you start with millions of dollars for land, so that's, that's some step we've had to deal with on the state level, it's not just education, everything. But Chris, we're gonna move to the capital outlay.
Yeah, if I could say one thing, Derek, in the case, I want to clarify, one thing we're at, if it wasn't for the state mandate increases, we would, just like what you're saying, I think, Angie and Chris, we would've been flat, so we've got some more stress we're working with, but what we can, what we can foresee, 4% dollar increase were there is bad, so we understand, as you're talking about having maintained, we were very conscious of that, and that's what we've got.
And that's what's starting to build in, this 3% increase from where it wanted to be. That's not something you put on, that's what you.
We have that.
We, we have asked that legislation be introduced in the short, short section, that all counties, throughout State North County, the county's given about $650 million, all counties combined, to employee teachers and a lot of other things that people don't realize, a lot of people don't realize, they think the state takes care of everything, when it comes to referees, and, well, it's not a $650 million statewide, so we've asked for legislation to be introduced, and it will be introduced, will it get out of committee? Out, out of it. But for the state to stick up those items in the county, especially the teachers that the county's employing, you know, all the rural counties, you know, in the car ways, we all have to do the same thing, every county has to employ some teachers. Kind of said, what is a county, 22 high kids per class, right?
Yeah, you can do that in these big counties, but it didn't work at Weynana Halem.
No.
No, and that, that, that.
That's the single biggest problem, Kevin.
Because it's a significant impact on everybody, which, Angie and I were looking at that, if not, if not the Waiyam Mountain and the Colosseus Gorge, we would add two, two students to every class in Franklin area and handle those two.
You know, if we could do geography with what Clay County does, if you take, take Highlands and Nana Halem, move everything, Franklin is, is not practical, I'm not suggesting that.
It would be, it would be two students per class.
Right. And you could, and you could basically do it for.
It would be about 30 less, 30 less staff.
There's probably still gotta overcome, I'm fearful of that committee when they said that, maybe, well, just have them split the data. You should have heart teachers work a part day in Highland, a part, I took them a mile.
And working out now, counting that.
There's, we, we, she and me, we have to say on school nurses, we made that gap. There's eight miles of straight road, and that's on the bypass, when you get, come off the Highlands mountain, before you can go to our own Waiyam. You know, it's not I-40, you, they, it's just hard for them to understand that, they look at the mileage.
Bottom line, you know, I, I think Derek will probably do what he can do to, do what he can, he's gotta present us a budget, that we've gotta be able to vote for.
And I'll just point out, we have, 2012, 13, we absorbed 24 positions, full-time positions, we did add two part-time positions, for a total employee count of a reduction of about 22 positions, and if you look at this list here, you can see that, on the left, we're looking at folks that have turned in resignations or told to be retired, we're looking at every one of those positions carefully, we're going to absorb those positions or combine these, that's what we're trying to do, we'll do that, so we're working.
One, another, another factor for this, is that, I think that we've been aware of this year, as, as the county, the county government that we have to remain aware of, is when you look at our fund balance position, over the last three years, you know, we saw that, we saw that fund balance declined by about 13%, we're gonna be down to around 29% at the end of this year, and we had to, we had to take 1.6 million from that fund balance. Now granted, we've done a lot of great projects, and we've done a lot of great things for the community, and we've still been able to maintain that kind of fund balance, which is great. Looking into the future, though, when, when we start talking about operating at the 29% fund balance level, when we keep using that to operate, that is, it's not sustainable, it's not a sustainable trend in our, and I realize it's a result of unfunded mandates from the state, but as a county, we, we have to always keep a watchful eye on that, and again, with the uncertainties that are coming on by the revaluation, that's something that we, that we wanna protect, is that fund balance, and doing that, I just think, you know, that, and I really appreciate being able to work with the board and the administration that shares these, these concerns, and that's also aware of what these unfunded mandates are doing to us at the county level as well, that's just another, another factor that we have to consider. We've set a policy, boards past and present, as a president, for the fund balance to be at about 25%. Our peer counties, the average for our peer counties, their fund balance is 27%. And, you know, at 29%, with the operating, if we came out of fund balance again, another 1.6 million dollars, our fund balance would be around 26% this year, if we.
You're talking recurring.
Yeah.
One time you can spend your, one thing.
Right, they're either recurring, you're basically, you don't spend your savings account to make your house payment, your power bill. So in other, in other words, that was another thing, if you're looking at going into the budget, is not only, let's not, not only do I do the direction, no tax increase, that was the direction I had to work with, but in realizing this, as a manager, and being placed to look out for the fiscal well-being of the county, that, that's something that, that fund balance and kind of getting that flat is another, another item that I was looking at going into this board. I apologize, I had to.
Do you remember what fund balance is? Do you remember what fund balance is?
Macon.
I've read about it.
Their fund balance?
Depending on just what that word means.
I don't know if we spend, do we have to spend, which one is it? Fifteen point three meter worth of fund balance.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, I'm talking about schools.
They have no fund balance.
I know. I asked him to give it.
Again, I apologize, I have our committee, I'm the, our vice chair, we take over the meeting.
We have to, we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to invest two hundred thousand dollars.
Schools should have a budget.
That's all straight through.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through the capital outlay, and if you have any questions, I'll, I'll explain briefly.
Sure.
What we've done, and we've looked at the capital outlay requests.
One question. Would it hurt to put a land item on their school population? How's that handled going from two thousand eight to now? Is it a trend?
ADM.
Is that, where's that at?
Down at the very bottom, total ADM.
Yeah, that's just for this year, how's that?
That is projected for two thousand fourteen, I, I think right now, and to be honest with you, Power School, familiar with Power School, that's the new computer software that our, our data managers enter in the attendance into every day, it is a mess, so. Our ADM right now is roughly forty-four hundred students. It hasn't changed a whole lot since two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
It's been essentially flat since about two thousand seven. We had, I was on school, we had, we were about twenty-nine hundred students in the mid-nineties, and that shot up to about what it is now pretty quick. We had twenty-five percent growth, very short period nine, but then, when the recession hit, everything leveled. I don't think it's changed since, it's probably over seven.
Now, I will say that the top line up there for teachers, that plus one for South Macon and plus one for Olavale, that is due to their projected increases in kindergarten. So, we do project that, it's like they're gonna come in and require additional teaching to those two schools. So, that's the two plus and three. But overall, the ADM is flat, pretty flat, not, not much change.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, it's not. These capital outlay requests, these were submitted by principals, and we've gone through at our work session and tried to identify the most urgent needs at each of these schools. We highlighted the most urgent needs in yellow, the blue, you know where you see a, a blue highlight, that is something that we qualify for a QZAP.
And I believe, I thought the ball, the surface repair track has been picked up by someone in the community.
Good, thank, thank me.
I do, I just, we only fund rates so much on the fund balance, we only fund rates so much for these next two, I mean, I'd rather pass these taxpayers now, we'll get like the co-curricular, you know, after a while, we can only fund rates for so much, too, the taxpayers want.
Yeah, that's right.
Same thing as using your savings, you don't want to do that for so long.
Which item was that on the list that's been funded?
Uh, the house school.
Oh, okay.
Re-surface repair track. The first item on that Cartoon J list, repair of the restrooms in both schools that were of bad design back when their good schools were built, they have laminate tops that are too tall for kindergarten first graders, and you still, water gets all over the sink, the laminate's killing up, we're gonna install wild home units like you'll see out here in Olavale, and that costs about twelve thousand dollars, that Cartoon J. We're going down to Franklin High School, we're requesting plenty of re-surface, recover the pavement, recover the wall plate, estimate that to be about fifteen thousand dollars. And again, those windows, the main building, we are repairing the ones that ballasts, we're replacing the ballasts in many of those windows, y'all gave us some funds to do that, total cost for replacement of those windows, we're at a one thousand dollar. Macon Middle School, there is a breezeway between A A and A B, the wings over at the middle school, that is a safety issue. It's open, when they change classes, see, they walk through those two wings, one of the doors has to remain unlocked, we need to build a wall between those two wings so that we can keep that door locked to the outside, they can use it in picture, and that's risked with the door, and that's when they use their cars. Renovation of the boys locker room, it's, it's just in a state of, it's in a state that needs to be repaired and renovated, costs about thirty thousand dollars. HVAC system at, on the band, cafeteria guy's wing, and the HVAC system on the sixth level wing, those two systems were installed when the building was originally built, they are at the end of their lifespan, and there is a lot that is today, if we don't make it to the school, that happens, we may be put in a situation, that happens in January, if we have no heat on one of those wings, we could be in a precarious situation. Mountain Middle School, so, he had some, he had some capital outlay requests, I don't know the priorities at this time. Nana Heights School, new curtains for the stage, those curtains were originally in the bodega for the renovation, back a couple of years ago, but they were, they were moved from the bodega, they are in need of replacement. The carpet, library in the front office, that is welded with new carpet, but what happened during the renovation was caused by the construction, the carpet got dirty, they had it cleaned, when they had it cleaned, it messed up the adhesive in the bottom of the carpet, so it's coming up, a few areas, it's, it needs to be replaced.
You talk carpet takes about, contracts are coming in on his insurance base?
Uh, I don't know if he has, we have no talk about that.
Maybe we should do that.
Well, we could.
I, I think you, what you find, some of that carpet now, even before the, the renovation.
It was probably twelve years old, it was done back in two thousand.
Yeah, it's.
It was eight years old.
Yeah, but you tend to get, close to ten years, that's a lot of the carpet, and.
Yeah, but if they run it, construction being run.
Some of it's coming up prior.
Oh.
And the vault areas.
And then, that sewer, sewer treatment plant that Mr. Shield referred to earlier, that, the sewer treatment plant that was, that is in place over there at Nana Heights, is originally, was installed in the sixties, was upgraded, I think, in nineteen eighty-six to a stand filtration system, right? Now, it is at the end of its lifespan, David received some cost estimate, it's gonna be cost about a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, but also, if we go to this system, what is exactly the new system cost?
Well, one's an aerobic, and then they're gonna switch to aerobic or vice versa, Paul probably knows more about which is which, but it's aerobic versus aerobic system they're gonna switch to, and the one they're gonna switch to is that takes less maintenance, sort of a daily maintenance, then you can go to like a weekly maintenance on that. And then, in that plant, this is probably seven, eight years ago, we went in, the underground tank was, was starting to get thin, corrosion, so they, we drained down in summer, it's kinda like rhino lining, like, we had a company come in and they, they recoded the tank, but they only said it would probably hold up for such a, part of the period of time that they gave, I, I can't remember. And so, that time is about run out, so we're expecting that, that underground tank will probably come off piece of, basically rhino lining.
So, it's, it's nearing its lifespan, and if we were to replace it with the system, the new system, we would save approximately thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand dollars per year in operating expenses because it would need to be inspected daily.
Yeah, it would have to be maintained, but right now, right now, you're contracting with somebody to do it, and it would be, it would be cheaper contracting out on the new system.
Is there a name, a brand name with that new system?
I'm seeing on this, sand, let's see, of the proposed recirculating sand filter, that's what it's called.
You got a sand filter now?
Yes. Have any, it's all recirculated.
My understanding is probably wouldn't have that sand bed, you know, the sand bed sitting out there where, where it comes out the tank and it drips through the sand.
Percolates through it.
Percolates through it. I'm assuming this new system, there's a built-in filter to it, but you don't think of all that, that space, it's not, it's not a sand bed.
The only place I saw a name or description, all the last, the bottom, pretty bottom paragraph down there.
DPA engineer.
Thanks, I'm glad you're somebody good.
Don't go in, don't let me stop here, I just, you know, my, maybe, just while we're going through here.
The next is, next school, it's South Macon, same model, same remodeling of both bandies that we had a cartoon job, the phone PA system out there is need, need a replacement, cost of twenty-three thousand. And then, Macon County Schools, couple of items that we've requested, a drain field system at Colosseum.
Any bites on the Colosseum schools, you got it for sale, or what's the status?
We don't have any bites.
Is it for sale, is advertised for sale, or is it?
It is for sale.
It's not been advertised recently.
One of the.
The last time it didn't.
Different time, now I've got a runner again.
Well, and one of the things with this drain field is that there is a sewer treatment facility out there now that has to be inspected, but we do have, we did receive a consent permit to install a drain field system, so it would need to be.
Open to the playground?
Well, actually, David looked at it again, and he thinks he's got enough room to put in a system down near the, in front of the building, so that would actually reduce the cost here, so it wouldn't be a problem. We're also asking for swipe card access locks at each school, this is a result of our emergency task force, we met with the sheriff department, they would like to have, they would like to have entrance to the building, two spots, obviously the front, main entrance, and then an additional entrance. In order for them to be able to access the building quickly, we will put these swipe card locks on there, that will be used at the front of the building, the lock force would have the swipe card, they can just swipe it, gain entrance at both the front and one other additional entrance. We're asking for a new driver's ed car, a couple of months ago, we did our budget work session, and I didn't ask, coach something today, but a few months ago, the driver's ed car had a hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, it's, I think, a two thousand and eight model. We are in need of a driver's ed car. We're asking for a generator for Macon, for the central office, we have a generator there now to the child nutrition warehouse, so that we could back up that freezer down there in case, in the event of a power loss, that generator could support that freezer. We also need a larger generator at the central office to help support TM's servers, when we do fully transition forward to power. Am I right, is that right?
Well, the, the generator that's there, we're gonna carry the load of, of that whole end of building with ID department and everything, which has to be all generated by the cap, it's already there, and it's operational, but we can't put anything else on it. That David requested, do we move that, that, I'm sorry, move that generator over to the freezer, and then put another generator that's a little bit, can handle more capacity at the central office in the area. You bet. I, I think we can't put the heat on it, we can't put the sewer pump or anything else on it, the generator that's there.
Now, and your, your load is gonna increase, is that right?
Uh, no, actually, our, our loads probably won't increase that much, it's just that we can only put the server room on it, you have to take the sewer pump off, and I believe the heating and cooling back there, have to take that off, and it's kind of important that the heating and cooling stay, stay, stay going for the server room.
Okay. And then, our final request for the capital outlay is a hundred fourteen thousand dollars, and this is just for furniture and equipment, I think we set this at twenty-five dollars per student, and the, the main reason for this is prior to, I think, two thousand eight, we provided each individual school with capital outlay money that they could use to purchase tables, desks, file cabinets, anything like that that they, that they might need, and that was, that was based on their ADM. We've not been able to do that in a number of years, schools are coming to, are in need of individual tables and things like that, that we don't have that, those funds available to us at the central office, and we'd just like to ask for some money to be able to give schools to provide for needs like that. We set that at about twenty-five dollars per year. If you go on down the list, our total request prior to our organization was about four point three million, there, also, we have about two point five million that could be applied for the QZAP form. Just below that, the, to remove all of the prioritized items, that's that next list, for a total adjusted request of about seven hundred thousand, four hundred million dollars. And then, beyond the capital outlay building and equipment, and that sort of thing, we're also requesting for four hundred thirty thousand dollars to be applied towards technology. A couple of reasons that this request is important is number one, a couple of years ago, county gave us one point five million dollars for, to refresh our computers and that sort of thing, because we've gone so long without replacing computers, having budget issues, we would, we don't wanna get back in the situation where we're coming to you and asking you for a one point five million dollar request, that's number one. And then, number two is that state is, has severely reduced our textbook allotment the past two years. Prior to those two years, they've given us option to reduce our textbook allotment and hold on to teacher-to-teacher assistance, which our school board administration chose to go that route, and I certainly understand why they would. But in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the state is only gonna fund digital textbooks, they're only gonna fund hard copy textbooks at that, at that time, this, that's their plan, the plan that they've informed us of.
For all grade?
For all grades. We, we received about sixty thousand dollars this year for textbooks, which is down about six hundred, six thousand, something like that from last year. Anyway, we didn't receive any more than we did last year for textbooks, that works out at about fourteen dollars per student. Your average textbook is gonna cost you anywhere from fifty to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We've not been able to purchase textbooks since about two thousand and five, all we can do with fourteen dollars per student is put band-aids over where our needs are degrading. You know, obviously, at the high school level, if you're trying to take a high school math course without a textbook, you're swimming upstream. If you are a parent who's trying to help your child remit school with their math homework, and they have no textbook, it puts parents in a difficult situation. And if you're a student that's trying to learn common core math and complex new curriculum without a textbook, you're swimming upstream. So, we're in a tough spot in terms of textbooks, and especially looking down the road, we're in a difficult situation, because the state's only gonna fund digital textbooks.
For the available math, Chris? There's always places up to, at best, calculus, math, so is it available digital right now?
Not all of them are available digital, but the average digital textbook just so happens to cost around fourteen dollars, which is exactly the state allotment for ADM for happens to cost around $14, which is exactly the state allotment or A D M for this one this year. Now, the problem is, they're going to, it looks to me like, looking at this budget, they're going to provide the money for that digital textbook, which is basically an application that you can put on your phone or on your iPad, but they're not going to fund the device. So without the device, that $14 per student is not going to do us any good. Tim has developed a plan and we have developed a plan to go to a one-to-one initiative at the high school, in other words, purchase an iPad for every student at the high school. We can then download those digital textbooks to the iPad. Students would have the textbooks at that point at the high school. Within three years, we would recycle those iPads down to the lower grades where again they would have textbooks at those grade levels. In order to do that, we have to have some technology funding. Tim, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Well, normally it would cost us about $430,000 a year for a place and fifth of our computers that, I think in your packet, you had a document that I handed the county commissioners about two years ago, historical capital and non-capital equipment needs. That's kind of the history of where we have been with technology funding in, in Macon County. You're gracious enough to try to get us caught up with that and you gave us 1.5 million dollars two years ago. And we use that money to replace and upgrade any of our machines that are in the schools and we're caught up and we're at a good point right now. But we're also requesting that $430,000 is an ongoing, if we don't stick, if we don't keep that, that one-fifth of our computers replaced, we're going to be back in the same situation that we were before. We're going to look at doing a one-to-one at high school level and we can do that by eliminating a lot of the classroom computers if we go to iPads and a lot of the labs. As a matter of fact, we're going to be, student computers will be reduced from 676 student computers to 256 across the county. Teacher computer numbers will stay the same. We'll reduce lab computers, we have 851 lab computers in the school system. We'll reduce that number to just below 600. So we'll offset some of the cost of, of the iPads at high school level with eliminating a lot of those classroom computers that are in the classrooms. If every student has an iPad or a textbook, a device they can, they can receive the textbooks all in their hands, they really don't need that computer over in the corner of that, there's two or three computers over in the corner, you can save that money. iPads are much cheaper than computers, much cheaper to operate, so that's kind of where we're looking. And we're not trying to give the kids a computer, we're really trying to give them a device that we can deliver digital content, we can deliver the textbook on. That's kind of where we're looking, what we're heading for. And that's what a lot of the states, many of the counties around us are doing, are doing that. So that, that's kind of the plan. We think we can pay for the iPads, we, we still have a little bit of the 1.5 million dollars left, we've got to purchase about 400 more iPads with, I just purchased 160 more iPads out of some state funding that we received and...
Tim, also we're seeing, you want to talk about that digital learning grant real quick?
Yeah, that would get us close. We also received a digital learning grant for about $48,000 this year to train our teachers on, on the new software and on how to use iPads in the classroom and things of that nature. And also $16,000 of that digital learning grant was to purchase textbooks for iPads. So we do have that as well. We'll have a shortfall of about 400 iPads to completely outfit all the stu, all the high school students in Macon County with iPads. As a matter of fact, if we go ahead and spend that money, that, the rest of 1.5 plus the money that we've already purchased those iPads with, will be about 400 iPads short. And we think with, with that capital outlay, that $430,000, we can, we can reach that, that goal of getting every student an iPad at high school level. As a matter of fact, it'll cost us about $282,000 more to do that. So that's kind of where we're, where we are.
All of our buildings now are wireless capable.
They are. We use the rest of the top money to purchase iPads and to outfit every school and every classroom with all the things.
So the infrastructure's in place, we've got the fiber, part of that fiber net.
Right.
The infrastructure's in place, we just don't have the device that we need, that's full advantage in that process.
And we're, we're not asking for any more than we would normally be asking for. That, that five-year refresh is going to cost us $430,000 whether we stay with iPads or we move to, or we stay with computers or we move to iPads. So we're not, we're not asking for any more or any additional than we would normally be asking. Just kind of letting you know what we're going to do with that.
Will iPads eventually replace the laptop or whatever the type of computer you've got now?
Uh, they already are starting to do that, yeah. In the, at Cartoon J and East Franklin, both, we've already put iPad carts in the schools. We put one iPad cart at grade level and we've taken all the computers out of the classroom. And so instead of having two computers over in the corner that wasn't used very much, every classroom now has access to six to 10 iPads, which is, you know, much more, more devices in the hands of students.
And the students can do their testing, or they're still working, testing on a computer and all that?
Yeah, testing is, is another thing that's driving this, they're requiring the old testing to be online. We really can't get all of our kids in that two-week testing window through all the labs and the schools, it's impossible. Look at every way we can do it, the only way we can do that is with a, a device like an iPad or some, a device that we can move around from the classroom to the class.
It's going in that direction because the cost of those are so much less, that this has happened, my, my son's father-in-law actually worked for Apple for years, he's just taking the job with private company that is funded through, he's a private corporation. I think the four school systems in America, they buy every child that's exposed to an iPad type product and they're going to do everything on that that they're just basically studying to see how that works, the cost to do that's a lot less than, you know.
I think, I think you'll eventually see the, the computers in the classrooms and the computer labs go away and will be moved to their personal, they call them personal learning devices is what they are.
And they're really just like personal learning device or digital learning device.
Can it get on the internet for that time?
Yes, yes you can. And these would be for the kids...
Man, they have that in school.
These would be for the kids to take home, they would take these home just like they would take their textbooks home.
Any, any questions?
I have one. Dr. Baldwin, what's the, the capital outlay this year's versus last year's? Do you have that in front of you?
Last year was $99,000, we received $99,000 last year, I'm sure what the request was.
I'm doing...
I mean, I can just go back and go just like you.
Well, one thing, and I'll say this, these apply to future boards of the commission or two, we didn't think, in fact, years ago, we had the old school, there were times we had $700, $800,000 in capital outlay. Now we've got all, we say new schools, but we were just South Macon in 2000, it's now almost 15 years old, so we, you know, thinking, so at some point you're going to have to start thinking about the paint, the carpet, those kind of things. And that, that was one reason I know that the commissioners at the time, Commissioner Davis and that group just previous to, I guess Ronnie and Kevin, really decreased that because now we've got new schools, we should have to make, make me understand at some point we need to...
Well, if we hadn't, if we hadn't put the money into it eight years ago, look where we'd be now, and that's what we did. Starting with the gym, the gym was the very first one, was the section standing backwards inside the gym, that was the very first project, Q Z A B or Q C A B, I get it. And then Tommy, we're a member of our, we went to, we did a lot of little projects. Get the tools, just call it up, we'll start building, we threw this stuff behind us. So at the end of the day, you're looking at about $800,000 in cash over the last year? That's what we're looking at now?
Look, we do. Always more than that. It's about 1.6 million over last year.
Were we appropriate?
If you had 700,000 capital outlay...
I'm putting those together, I mean, I came up with...
1.631...
I just put 1.1, 748.
700,000 capital outlay, 430 technology refresh, about 500,000.
How much?
1,631,210.
Over the last year.
Any, any other questions? Leave everybody out there, don't, the later the more people.
Well, you've got a work session scheduled with the committee.
Uh, we'll, we'll be developing that and distributing it May 13th with the, with the proposed budget, so that we will pass that out there, that's what we're going to do next season. Any other business right here, folks?
Some of them.
Second question, I'm afraid to say I have, but I'm returning, I guess you guys.
Yeah, we do. I can't make it. I'll hear the first, second.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Where's that?